I call a September 24, 2018 Board of Selectmen meeting to order. Please rise for the pledgeville agents.
Pledgeville agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
7:00 PM, we have a hearing to set the fees for plowing and sanding of private ways for the upcoming 2018 to 2019 winter season. Scott?
Madam Chair, would you, did you want to?
Oh, you want to do minutes too?
Just a thought.
All right, well, he's working his way up here.
Okay.
How about the minutes of the September 10, 2018 regular meeting?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve the minutes of the September 10, 2018 regular meeting.
Second? Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Thank you.
Oh, and you made your way up here safely.
I did. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Scott Shoppertaylor, DPW Director, Northborough. We have our annual snow removal on private ways. Contract considerations and increases this year, we're doing as we've done in the past years, a modest $5 increase. It equates to approximately 2.6% over last year's rate. There are only two private ways that we still provide snow removal services for. They're Harris Ave and Maple Lane.
Okay. We do this annually. That percentage seems like a reasonable increase. Any questions? Discussion, Leslie?
Thanks, Scott. I ask this every year, but it does go up $5 every year, pretty much. Is that a necessary increase and does that also cover what you need to do there?
It's a necessary increase. The percentages have always historically been below what our operating expense increases are across the department and even much lower than the operating expenses under the snow and ice section alone. So, does it cover the costs? It adequately addresses the costs. Snow that falls during the day is less expensive to remove than snow that falls in the evening. Now, only rates change quite a bit when drivers are going out for 24-hour stretches, so. Very season to season, but generally it's in the range, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have a discussion? Hearing none, do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move the board vote to set the fees for plowing and treatment of private ways less than 3,000 feet for the 2018-2019 winter season as follows. $200 per storm for private way for plowing, $200 per storm per private way for treatment.
Second? Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a hearing to consider an application for a special one-day license as submitted by David Brannan from a residence located at 309 Main Street. Hi.
Evening. I'm Sean Durkin, this is Jim Furlong. We're with the Northborough Challenger Sports Program. I'll give a quick overview of our program. Hard to believe it was five years ago. We started teaching a small group of special needs kids baseball. We had 17 kids the first year. We had a great time and we asked them, hey, you want to play soccer? They all wanted to, so we did indoor soccer and we decided to do indoor basketball. So, this year amazingly, we had over 100 kids in the baseball program alone. So, we do this cornhole tournament fundraiser, Texas Barbecue. We have, most of our money comes from the Fidrich Foundation and Ann and Jessica will tell us anytime we need anything for the kids, just call them, it's been great. But we also do some supplementary fundraising on our own just to help out as much as we can. The money she gives us goes to all the kids. We partner every special needs kid with a buddy from high school or the middle school. No one has to pay for anything, whether it's baseball gloves, equipment, soccer ball. Last year we used the cornhole money fundraiser to buy a trailer. I don't know if you may have seen it around. Jim and I get tired of, from our basement garage, every activity, it kept crazy to bring all the stuff, so. Now, every season we put it in a trailer, we drive to every event, it's been great, so. Dave Brannan can't be here tonight, he owns a Texas barbecue. What he does, amazingly enough, he gives us a facility for the day. It's an awesome time. It's just a simple game, we have hot dogs, burgers, cold beer outside. We get rope off a section of the parking lot, everything's controlled, no problems. Everyone loves it and it, again, it's our principal fundraiser and we really thank you. This is, we are, what, fourth consecutive one? So, all year put a team together, $50. It's a lot of fun, though. And like I said, all the money goes to the Challenger kids, all of it.
Thank you, and thank you for all your efforts. It's a rewarding program, I've been not really involved, like I'd like to be, but involved on the periphery is helping.
Yeah.
And it's just amazing to watch the kids and see how important it is to them. From the board? Jason?
Yeah, I just want to thank you two guys in particular for doing all the organization for the Challenger program. It's a lot of time, a lot of effort. You could be doing lots of other things with your time and this is what you choose to do, so it's much appreciated. Also appreciate the Brannan family for providing the Texas barbecue facility to conduct this fundraiser. They were always very generous with their time and contributions to the community, so we certainly appreciate their efforts as well. Just looking forward to another successful weekend. In the past, I think it's become clear, I'm a much better spectator than participant. Certainly look forward to seeing it happen again this year, so, thank you.
Leslie?
Yeah, I also wanted to thank you as well. It is a lot of work on your part to do this and to want to do it every year and just to put all that time in for such a worthwhile venture is very admirable. And also the communication that you're doing this year is great, too. Putting the word out, Facebook and asking different people to put the word out and share the information. I think that's great, so thank you very, very much for doing that. Appreciate it.
Who else?
Thank you.
Hearing none, no other discussion, do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move the board vote to approve the application for a special one-day license as submitted by David Brannan for an event to be held in the parking lot adjacent to the Texas barbecue company at 309 Main Street on Sunday, October 7, 2018 between the hours of 12 noon and 6:00 PM. Per the recommendation of the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission, the license shall include the 24-hour period immediately before and after the event in order to allow for the proper delivery and disposal of all alcoholic beverages prior to and immediately following the event and to further waive the license fee. The following conditions shall apply. One, the parking lot area for the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages shall be clearly marked. Two, proper signage notifying guests that alcohol must be consumed within the marked areas of the parking lot. And three, a permit from the building department is required in the event that a tent larger than a standard EZ Up will be used.
Second? Motion's been made and seconded, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Good luck and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. It's almost past the hour, 7:10, it's a hearing. To consider an application for a special one-day license is submitted by Melissa Kane on behalf of St. Bernadette School for a premises located at 266 Main Street. Hi.
Hi. I'm actually Megan Kelleher.
So you didn't submit it, but you can talk about it?
I submitted it.
Oh, you submitted it too? Oh, all right. Got that, okay.
So, last year we had a family tailgate event for community building for the St. Bernadette School community and we are hoping to do a second annual. Again, we have food trucks come in, the game is, the Patriots game is on a big screen in the gym, the doors are open and there are crafts and we're having a video game truck this year as well. So, we're hoping to have a good turnout like we did last year.
Okay. Good. Any questions from the board? Leslie?
Was there, is there parking at the Thai Food Restaurant? I don't know, I couldn't quite tell from the drawing.
No.
Here, no. So, but there is sufficient parking, because you're expecting 400 plus?
Um, we had around 325, 330. And there, we didn't have a problem with parking last year. We used a school parking lot and the lot where the early childhood center is.
Yeah.
So, we didn't seem to have a problem last year.
Okay, so that worked out well.
Yep.
Okay, super. All right, thank you. And neither chief has any concerns? Any other discussion? Hearing none, do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move the board vote to approve the application for a special one-day license as submitted by Megan Kelleher on behalf of St. Bernadette School for an event to be held in the parking lot at 266 Main Street on Sunday, October 21, 2018 between the hours of 1:00 PM to end 4:00 PM. Per the recommendation of the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission, the license shall include the 24-hour period immediately before and after the event in order to allow for the proper delivery and disposal of all alcoholic beverages prior to and immediately following the event and to further waive the license fee. The following conditions shall apply. One, one member of the staff who will be present at the event must be certified as a crowd control manager. Two, the parking lot area for the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages shall be clearly marked. Three, proper signage notifying guests that alcohol must be consumed within the marked areas of the parking lot. And four, a permit from the building department is required in the event that a tent larger than a standard EZ Up will be used.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Are you okay with all the different stipulations?
Yes.
Okay. Motion made and seconded, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Good luck.
Thanks.
Have a good time.
Thank you.
Okay. William L. of Police Chief, appointment of a special police officers.
Madam Chair, that was the board. Before you tonight, asking you to appoint these two gentlemen as special police officers. Immediately to my left is Dan Hanley. Dan's from Melrose. He went through our last hiring process in 2016 and actually made it to the top 10. Fortunately, at that time, he was not an academy graduate. He's a, he is a graduate of St. Anselm's College with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Since that time, he saw agency sponsorship and put himself through the police academy and he graduated this past Friday from the Northern Essex Community College Camp, Police Academy up in Essex. I'm sorry, I hate it. He graduated again on Friday and was also the recipient of the Defensive Tactics Award out of all of the students in his class, so we can't mess with him. And as a result of graduating from the full-time academy, he's actually fully certified to work as a full-time police officer anywhere in Massachusetts. So, he's more than capable of coming to work with us. It's obviously part-time in the sense that it's mostly for detail work. I'll move on to Jake Mick. Jake's a Northborough resident, graduated from Elgin Quinn. He just happens to be the son of one of our dispatchers, Katie Mick. He also graduated from what was the State University. His degree is not in criminal justice, however, it's business administration, but he decided that he wanted to do a career change, so. He also put himself through the academy, which is at no significant, it's actually a fairly significant expense. And in addition to that, you have to go without an income for six months while you're at the academy, so. He went to the State Police Municipal Academy in New Braintree and he graduated a week ago, this past Friday. And he too is also certified fully to be a full-time police officer. Both, Dan and Jake, have completed their pre-employment physicals. They've completed their physical abilities testing and drugs screening. And I would ask that you appoint them as special officers. It's my goal to come back to you and within the next few weeks for your October meeting with at least two additional appointments. We didn't have time to get paperwork processed and get everything done that I needed to get done for them as well. Currently, right now, as you're probably aware, we're dealing with a strike situation. I shouldn't say strike, but at least a lockout at National Grid that requires me to have a significant number of offices every day and they're working there because I have to have offices at that location. And that's leaving us short with some of our regular utility details and things like that, so we're having a hard time filling details. So, hopefully that's not going to last too much longer, but I have been in touch with different folks in National Grid and it doesn't look like that's going to end anytime soon, so. This will be a welcome relief to our full-time staff that's trying to fill all of the voids that we have, so. And that is what I have to say and I would ask that you appoint both of them effective tomorrow, actually.
Questions from the board? Leslie?
First of all, you obviously both come well, well.
Condensed?
Yes, well-prepared and well-qualified, yes.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Very impressive resume on both your parts and we're happy to have you here. So, thank you very much for applying for these positions in the town of Northborough. What happens after the one year? This is one year effective tomorrow.
Well, as we just did in this past June with Jim Bruce and Ray Reynolds.
Yes.
I would come back before the board and ask that they be reappointed. Specials are appointed on an annual basis.
Yes, okay. I just want to make that clear for the audience, that's the process that we follow, but very impressive, both of you. So, thank you very much.
It's just unfortunate we don't have full-time jobs.
Congratulations to both of you on your recent graduations from the academies. Any other questions from the board? Jason?
I just want to say congratulations, thank you guys for choosing Northborough, as they say. And it also speaks very highly to both of you that you took the initiative to put yourself through the Recruit Academy and just says a lot about your motivation and your interest in working in this field, so. We're just very pleased to have you onboard, look forward to work you do. Also, I know Jake from some past years at squirt-level hockey in Starhawks Hockey Program, so. I know what he's capable of.
A little hockey stink. Do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair, I move the board vote to appoint Daniel Hanley and Jacob Mick as special police officers for a period of one year to be effective September 25, 2018.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded, any other discussions? Hearing none, all in favor? Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Reports, Julianne?
So, the first thing is, of course, to express my sincere thanks to all of the people who made Apple Fest possible. I'm told hundreds of people worked on this event as well as town departments. Thanks for organizing it, thanks for all the hard work that went into it and thanks for a really fun weekend celebrating the town. And I also wanted to say congratulations to the new police officers, but they're all, they have left. So, the other thing I would like to report on is, on September 13, I attended a CMRPC meeting. CMRPC is the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission. The meeting was about the 2020 census, which everybody will be hearing more about, but the important thing is, is that we need as much participation as possible because this is how federal and state monies are allocated. And it's also used in determining the number of US representatives we have as well as representation in state and local government. In addition to that, the speaker also talked about jobs that are available during the years of the census project and if anyone is interested, the information is available online. And the last thing I'd like to report on is, on September 19, the White Cliffs Committee met and narrowed down the architectural firms to be considered to four firms. We'll be talking to them on September 28 and October 2. In reading through the proposal, it was really great to see that a lot of the firms commented on the historic value and interest of the building as well as how well-preserved the inside is. It's the original interior, so that was very encouraging. And that's my report.
Thank you. Leslie?
Okay, I'd also like to comment on Apple Fest. It really was a great weekend, the weather was perfect. I don't think it really could have worked out any better, in fact, it was kind of hot. But better that than the other way around where things just would not have been able to happen if it had been raining. So, it was a lot of fun. The street fair was excellent, the farmer's market was a lot of fun. In fact, I heard a lot of people say that they wished it could happen more often, that it wasn't just an Apple Fest thing. So, and I think with the Town Common Project coming along that I could see that kind of thing being exactly the kind of thing that happens there a little bit more often. Barbecue was great, fireworks, the parade worked out fine, there seemed to be a lot of people downtown this year. I would say maybe a little bit more than last year on the Sunday. From what I could tell, it seemed to be, maybe? I don't know what you guys' thoughts were on that, but anyway, that worked out fine. I know we're going to be discussing that kind of the near future at a meeting, I think, as far as parade planning the next time before things get going too far on that. But I did also want to thank the DPW who was everywhere. Everywhere I looked, there was a DPW employee cleaning up, picking up. I believe they all had vests on and they were just all over the place. It was really wonderful how that was, how they did and the police and fire departments too. Thank you so much for your staff, very super, really. Please pass that on to your staff because it was amazing, really, how that all happened and how that all came together. It's a lot of resources that the town provides for Apple Fest, so I'm sure that was appreciated by everybody. Northborough Crossing commenting on the new light, over the weekend it was blinking, it was up and blinking. Is it working today or? I'm sorry?
It's blinking by design.
Blinking by design?
To give people a little bit of notice that it's there, rather than you just fly up and, you know, you don't think that there's a light there. So, it's out there blinking to draw attention to it before it goes active.
Okay.
There's nothing wrong with it, it's being done by, I guess I'd say, by design.
Yeah.
Condition behavior.
Yeah, it is, it is, but it's a fantastic location, I'm so glad that is, that is up. Especially before the holidays, so.
Yeah.
I think that's, that's great timing on that. John, I did want to ask you again about the Carney Park, is there anybody that you were able to contact about that in terms of the?
Yeah, we've.
Making sure of adherence to the leash law?
Yeah, we've referred it to animal control, they're doing some extra enforcement out there.
Okay.
Like I said, it's kind of like speeding or, you know, you do the enforcement, the problem gets addressed and then, you know, you move on and it comes back, so periodically we have to go out there.
Okay.
So, we're doing some additional enforcement.
I appreciate that.
Yep.
Great, I do appreciate that very much. Also wanted to comment on the fact that Home Sense opened on September 20 up at the Northborough Crossing and I think that's going to be a big draw as there are some other new things going in up there. But I think more importantly is the fact that they donated $10,000 to the Northborough Food Pantry. That is unbelievable. And it says a lot about them in terms of wanting to be part of this community and to make a statement that they feel strongly about being committed to our particular community, so. I wanted to really make a big deal about that. I think Karen Skopetsky went up there and accepted the check. She's running the, or co-running the Northborough Food Pantry now and I think that really says a lot about them as an organization. My last questions, actually, yeah, questions were actually for Chief Liver. Looking through the police, the monthly report that you gave us last time, a couple of questions. Would you mind explaining the 911? What is happening for residents in the near future in terms of changes? And how 911 operates? It's going to be a more direct communication, right, if we dial 911?
It's, very shortly you'll be able to text to 911.
Text, okay, yeah.
The intent behind that is that if perhaps there's an intruder in your home and you can't speak, you'll be able to text your message and the text will come over the 911 screen. We really hope that people don't choose to text 911 since in lieu of picking up the phone and dialing 911. But more importantly is further down the road will be people will be able to livestream video to 911 and we don't have any clue what that impact's going to be on the dispatch staff. Someone could be at an accident scene and FaceTime it to 911 and it will come on the screen, so. One of the things we're dealing with right now is, 911 has very stringent guidelines on how all 911 calls are handled, so they're very uniform statewide. Each PSAP and 911 center has to handle all calls the same way. They answer the phone the same way and they handle the calls in the same way. But they've given us no guidance on texts to 911 and the preliminary information is they're going to leave it up to individual agencies to determine how they're going to handle texts and that's basically unacceptable. They've dictated everything that we do so far, so we'll see how that, how that will go. That should start around December. And the most recent change is we've taken what's called Phase 2 911 calls. Previously, if you called 911 on a cellphone, it went to the state police, one of three or four state police dispatch centers. They would find your location, ascertain your location and they would either transfer the call directly to the town where the jurisdiction is or they would take the information and relay it. Back about a month, about two months ago, we went live with actual taking Phase 2 calls. So, if you dial 911, you have a smartphone, it'll actually, it shows your position on a map in dispatch to, basically within about 50 feet. And then, the state, they put a geofence around 290, so if someone calls 911 from 290, it's not going to bombard our dispatch center, that'll still go to the state 911 department because you can imagine the volume of traffic on 290, everybody sees an accident, everybody feels compelled to dial 911. And my one dispatcher gets over one with about 30 calls in about 10 seconds. So, at least that, those calls will not come to us. So, 290 is the only state jurisdiction that won't come to Northborough, all other phones will. So, that's, that's in effect now and that actually expedites response time instead of having to figure out where the caller is and then transferring the call to the appropriate jurisdiction.
Yes.
The call will actually go to the jurisdiction where the phone is located. And we're doing that now, that had a minimal impact on us, quite honestly. It was, calls that would have been transferred to us anyway, they're just coming in direct.
Okay.
The next impact, which I, will be interesting to see, is the text to 911. And that will be coming online in about December.
Okay, okay. I find that an interesting feature because I wonder really what the percentage of calls are from people who can't or are unable to or don't want to speak.
Exactly.
That's interesting.
It's a really great thing, we just, people need to remember that it's not Twitter and it's not Facebook, so don't message things, because people still do that, they'll put on Facebook, on Twitter, I need the police or 911. They're not monitored, our sites and the police are not monitored 24/7, so we may not see that.
Okay.
So, it's really important and it's not online yet, so don't do it yet. Wait till it's online.
Well, we'll have people actually make inquiries or report things on our Facebook page and write on it, it says, this is not monitored 24/7, please call 911 or the business line. They don't, they still just, for some reason, they don't want to have that personal conversation, I guess. They feel more comfortable leaving a message.
Interesting.
And like the chief said, we don't do business that way, you have to call.
Thank you for explaining that, I appreciate that. And my last question is, what is the status of our dispatch positions?
Well, I'm pleased to say that we made a pre-offer of employment. And after about 20 months of trying to fill two positions, we actually made an offer which was accepted and we're in the process of doing a background check. And we have identified two other candidates, one of them who is, I'll be speaking with more than likely tomorrow to meet with her to do a preoffer. She's met with the town administrator and with the assistant town administrator and, you know, we got blessing on that, so. And that will be for the position that becomes available on January 1st, that's the new position, so.
Okay.
Looking good, we should be at full strength within about two months because that's, you know, the minimum training time. But the candidate that we did make the offer to has got a wealth of EMS experience, working in Boston.
That's great.
Ambulances and things, so as far as like the emergency medical dispatch aspect of the job, I mean, that's a big bonus for us and that's what put her in first, you know, place, so to speak, as far as how we're going to make the offer, so. Like I said, we'll be making a preoffer to the other candidate for January 1st, well, actually, January 2nd, we don't start people on New Year's Day. And that actually still leaves us with one or two good candidates down the road.
Down the road.
You know, we have the future movement terms like that.
It was really weird, we had these good candidates in a row, it was scary. It was great, but it was very strange.
It's been a never-ending story trying to fill these jobs.
Yeah.
It's actually, it's an industry-wide problem, actually, that was just brought to my attention today, there was another article in USA that.
I saw something about that.
And there was another article in the Wall Street Journal a while back, it was just, people just aren't going to the public safety 911 job anymore due to the stress of the calls and the volume.
Well, good luck with that, thank you very much. Thank you for taking the time to go through all that.
People that need to be thanked and I will be bringing them here before you, on my current dispatch staff.
No question.
Operating shorthanded for over 18 months and have really stepped up and kept the coverage intact without a single force in.
Wow. Thank you very much, appreciate that. Thank you. That's my report.
Jason?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just add my thanks to all the people involved with Apple Fest, Apple Fest Committee, Rotary, Northborough Education Foundation and other volunteers and organizations that put together all the activities that so many of the town residents were able to enjoy. I also want to thank the town staff, police department, fire department, DPW department for all the work they do that, you know, it's necessary and it's busy and it's time-consuming, but it's not something that the people who are going to the activities really always recognize and appreciate, so. Just want to let you guys know that we really appreciate all the effort you put into it this year, so. Seguing to the Master Plan Steering Committee, the Master Plan Steering Committee had a booth at the farmer's market. at the farmer's market at Apple Fest, primarily staffed by our consultant, Jeffrey Morrison Logan, Master Plan Steering Committee Chair Fran Backstrand, and myself. We got a pretty good traffic flow through there. We had poster boards up showing the, a lot of statistics, demographics, geography, information about the town as it currently stands, and display of the various vision and goals that we've arrived at to date. There's more work to do. And toward that end, there's going to be a public information meeting on October 4th, that's a Thursday, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Algonquin Regional High School. This will bring everyone up to date and solicit more input from the community to feed into some of the more detailed recommendations and implementation plans that we would prepare from this point forward. Online, there's also a new survey. We certainly invite everyone to take part in that and give us your input through that channel. The way you do that is to go to northboroughmp.com. That's Northborough, N-O-R-T-H-B-O-R-O-M-P dot com. No O-U-G-H in there. It's a different survey from the one that was held or conducted previously last June. So you definitely want to get online and, and submit your input for this one as well. Last Monday, September 17th, attended the public presentation of the town common design proposals. Slotting Retain was also there. The design consultant provided two designs. It's not an either-or choice. These are just to illustrate quite a lot of the options in terms of aesthetics and functionality and essentially invite some, some inputs, some comparisons, some contrasting viewpoints. The consultant will take that information now and go back and try to consolidate that into a single design, which will be presented at a future date. And then we'll proceed from there with final decisions. And I guess a bid planned early 2019 and construction spring through fall 2019. Is that about right?
Yep.
Okay. I want to thank Kathy Jubert, Town Planner, and Scott Sharp, interior DPW Director, for conducting that meeting, moderating that meeting, getting all the input and making sure everyone's concerns were heard. And then, let's see. Yesterday, I attended the Brian Arsenal Memorial Ride. I did not ride, but I was there at the ceremony and the barbecue afterward, which they've left. But Sean Dirk and Jim Furlong and the Brandon family were also heavily involved with that, providing the food to the riders after they had completed the circuit. So it was just a very good turnout. A ton of bikes. It was really something to see. And a lot of people contributing to support this, which supports the Brian Arsenal Memorial Fund. Monies for that go to some high school scholarships and also to organizations that provide support services for war veterans. So very worthy cause and is happy to, to be there. And then finally, this Saturday, September 29th, from 9:00 to 1:00, the Police Department will hold an open house at the police station. You get to tour the station, get a up-close look at equipment, 911 comm center, police vehicles, and even spend a little time in the holding cell if you like, so.
We excel at babysitting.
If you're ever curious about what goes on at a police station, this is a perfect opportunity to find out without having to go about it the wrong way. So we certainly encourage people, if they're interested, to, to attend that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Apple Fest, obviously, a great weekend for everyone. But to Leslie's point, we had said that we would discuss the parade. And we do know DPW, police and fire work around the clock almost that whole weekend. So we said we would look at it relatively early. So I would ask that we put it on for our first meeting in November, John?
Sure.
Okay. I'd like to congratulate the Grand Marshal Roger Leland. We all know he's done so much for the town in Northborough. A lot of it behind the scenes. And he's on our financial planning committee. And it was an honor for Roger, but I think the town in Northborough is lucky to have Roger Leland and has been very lucky for his service to the town and the community. Meeting today on the Fire Building Committee. We're continuing to try to lock down a site or a couple sites and hopefully be able to come forward at town meeting with a, a plan. We are slowly marching forward, but it's a lengthy process trying to decide on the site for the location. So we continue to work on it and hopefully we will be coming forward at town meeting. We have tentatively scheduled a meeting that will bring financial planning, appropriations and the Board of Selectment all together to here where we're at in the month of November. Not very certain yet, but as it gets closer, we'll let you know what the date is definitely going to be. And that concludes my report. John?
No report this evening?
Okay. Brings us to public comments. Any public comments? Mr. Stone, you want to come up?
Howie Stone, 257B Rice Ave. I'm here to talk about to the Board of Selectmen. We have a culvert that's collapsed on Rice Ave from the pond. And it comes down through my farm. And it's collapsed. The part is, this happened 17 years ago. Where have you all been? That's what I want to know. Nobody's following up on this. On May 11th, 2001, I was working down at 1 East Main Street, Dr. Halcy's building. I had the site contract for that. I was doing that, but that weekend, I looked at the pipe and there's a concrete and it's a 36-inch pipe. The pipe, the pipe has shrunk down about that much below the concrete. So I went over and I looked and there's nice clean water, but the bottom is rotted where the water's flowing. So the, the pipe is round, so it's curling in like this. That's in May 11th, 2001. Where have you all been? You read my article, the, the thing I gave you?
I did.
Put in your packet? Huh?
I did.
We have no money, we have no money, but we can buy Tonka toys for the town highway department and everything else and spend all kinds of crazy money. But here's the catch. You don't know what's there. On Edmond Hill is a water tank. The water, 12-inch water main comes down from that tank to Rice Ave, Rice Ave. Then it comes down the street and it's an AC, AC pipe, asbestos type, right? And it's not a bridge gooder. It don't carry the weight cast iron does or buckle iron. That thing will collapse. Here's the dip in the road. A scrot, I think it was, dug it up and next to the pipe. And they poured a thing of concrete for some reason. But anyways, the whole thing is going down again. Well, you know, one of these days, some night or someday, the trash truck goes by or the oil truck, anything going to go. And it's going to doop-a-doo, it's going to boom. There goes the pipe. That 12-inch pipe blows. The road is gone in a matter of minutes. And somebody coming down Rice Ave, 3 o'clock in the morning, 2 o'clock in the morning, at midnight, right? And don't know it, it's going to go. Somebody's life will be taken. And you just sit here and do nothing.
Okay.
I've been to the town, everybody, I've been to Fred, I've been to Gadea. Yeah, we don't have any money. We don't have any money. Well, it's time that somebody says something to you people to run, Mr. Gadea, run the town and do something about it.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. Scott, would you like to address this?
To the Chair, if I just may something, say something. When it comes to infrastructure, investments in capital, you know, we have a six-year capital plan, we have a roadway management plan. I can understand how somebody might interpret saying we have no money when we say we have limited resources and we need to deploy those limited resources in a priority order. Culverts were something that we actually took an in-depth look at. Those of you that have been on the board for a long time, we had the issue up on Otis Street. We currently, and I don't want to steal Scott's thunder, but Fisher Street culvert has been designed and out to bid and will start work next week, within the next couple of weeks.
It's going to be closed this week.
We have one on Pleasant Street and we have Rice Ave. So we're well aware of it. We have been monitoring, we've been patching. And again, Scott can indicate where we are at the same time. It's very similar to if someone said, you know, you know, this point out a roadway in town that's in rough shape. We're aware of it and we have a plan and we're doing it in priority order. So we are aware, we have been monitoring and we've been maintaining, and it is part of the plan. And, you know, with that, in that context, I've never told anybody we don't have money if it was a public safety issue. But we assess risk and we prioritize. That's what we do. Because no town has enough money to fix all of particular their infrastructure. It is the number one issue facing America right now is aging infrastructure and not enough money to go into that. It's one of the reasons why every year, our number one priority when we meet with our legislative delegation is that we need more Chapter 90 funds to do more roadway, bridge and culvert work. That's in need across the town. We just filled out the survey this, this week or last week to the MMA. And they make their case for why we need more funding. It is the top priority that we discuss when our, when our legislative delegation comes in and it will continue to be. But as far as public safety, we prioritize and we make sure we take care of things in the order in which public safety dictates. But with that context, I'll just turn it over to Scott and maybe you speak a little bit specifically about Rice Ave and what we're doing.
In one second. In all fairness, I think the town in Northborough has taken some very good steps toward taking care of our roadways.
Absolutely.
Have developed the road plan, the paving and management plan. How long ago on do, John Kadea?
Three or four years ago, maybe. How, was it four years?
2014 was our first drive.
Yeah. So, so we've actually done a comprehensive review so we know what the needs are, where they are. That was presented to the board. So those of you members who have been on the board for a while, you know exactly where you've been and you have a better handle on the needs, I'd say, than most communities in town. You know exactly how much we spend, you know how much we really ought to be spending. And if those resources aren't there, you know exactly what our pavement condition index, which is measured objectively by a third party, what that will do over time. So the planning has been excellent and Scott is updating the latest round of our pavement management plan. Rice Ave is part of that.
Not only is the state contributing its Chapter 90 money, not at the rate we'd like, but the town is also throwing into that money too so that we can do the roads at a faster pace. Scott?
So we, Mr. Stone's correct, that culvert's been problematic for a number of years. When we started looking at it a little more detail is when the flow characteristics changed. It's a corrugated metal pipe. Mr. Stone's correct. Corrugated metal pipes rust and, and fall apart on the bottom. There's sediment and water as it flows. The sediment takes away the galvanizing, the metal rusts, and the pipe loses its bottom and falls. As soon as that happened on the inlet side, we knew there was some flow restriction issues. Shortly thereafter, this started to become a sinkhole next to the retaining wall. We proceeded to patch it and patch it and continue to patch it during the, during the winter season. In spring, we were able to cut it out, dig down about seven and a half feet to an elevation that we were comfortable with, exposing the back of the stone wall and observe what the soil conditions were. We didn't see anything out of the ordinary. It was looser than I expected, which leads me to believe the materials, was roadway material probably dropping down into the annulus that remains when the culvert top falls. We filled it with flowable back with, with flow fill. It's a mass DOT material. It's loose concrete with no aggregate. It's more solid in an erosion condition than, than gravel. The goal and attempt there was to postpone any further loss of material into the culvert. We then patched it. Highway and sewer staff mobilized to the inlet side to see if there was a way we could get a pipe through it, a smaller diameter, to get us through the season until we could repair, do the design and repair. We couldn't advance the pipe through. We tried video inspection of the downstream. As soon as we got the camera, we went in and we saw large cobbles, like grapefruit-sized rocks in the culvert. The camera can't negotiate around those things. So we went as far as we could. It is conveying water. It's not conveying water well, but it, water is getting through. So we requested Chapter 90 funds for design and permitting services for civil engineers in March, beginning of, beginning of May. Got approval a couple of weeks later. We've since done the ground survey, topographic survey, property line survey. We did geotechnical boring out there. Found that the material was loose, which is what we expected. The hydraulic analysis is done. I received the preliminary site plan this morning. Had some comments, go back to the engineer, about some changes we'd like to do. My next step is to go to the neighbor, the upstream side, the strouts, to show them what design alternatives there are for the upstream headwall. It's a municipal wall. It's, it's going to be on town property. They're going to be looking at it. And it's not going to be an old historic dry joint stone wall anymore. Those should not be holding up roadways. So I'm going to show them what the design alternatives are, to get something that's pleasing to them. It's a beautiful field. It's a nice, and it's a beautiful vista from the backside. The goal and objective is to get, construct some bid documents on the street this winter when contractors are hungry and they want to fill their books. In all likelihood, the Conservation Commission's permit will require the work to be done in the dry, which means a contractor can't actually start doing work in the waterway until July, June, July, August, which will be helpful for the school buses. We want to talk to the school bus service. On the, on the domestic water side, we've recently completed the development of a dynamic hydraulic model throughout the town. So we can model lots of different scenarios with our water distribution system. You can find vulnerability locations that are problematic if it went down, massive fire flow problems occur. Bottlenecks. Construction projects like this, you can identify whether the, the town loses any flow or pressure or capacity by cutting that pipe and capping it. We ran the model scenario. We can survive with that pipe cut and capped within the construction limits and have no negative impacts to, to flow or pressure around town. That's an asset to the town. We definitely save a lot of money. We don't have to put a temporary bypass pipe in and suspend it across an excavation. So the design is proceeding, proceeding well. Once we have an indication from the neighbor on what the desire is for the wall to, to look like, we start developing construction specifications, construction cost estimate in parallel with the environmental permitting process.
So that's a very detailed explanation, simple answer, which is it's in design and permitting. It will be constructed in the spring in accordance with our ongoing plans.
That's what they told me in 2017. It'll be done in 2018. Now we're in 2018. It's been this way every...
When it comes, when it comes to, to the Chair, when it comes to capital planning, we have to look at moving priorities and other needs. And so we're constantly assessing those. And they're done in a priority order. Rice Ave's up. It will be done this spring. That's the plan. Fisher Street will be done, beginning construction in the next couple of weeks. And Otis Street, unfortunately, as you well know, was one that was done under an emergency situation. So part of getting a handle on everything is so that you have an understanding of what the needs are, how much it costs, and you can prioritize that based on the limited resources. It's not that we have no money, but like every community, at every municipality, we have limited resources. So we want to make sure we're leveraging those resources in a priority order to get the things that need to get done first done in that order. And that's exactly what we've done. And Rice Ave is on deck and it's being designed and permitted now. It'll be constructed in the spring. There really isn't anything else more that we could or should be doing at this moment.
What are you going to do for safety?
Mr. Stone, you're actually welcome to come back in the fall of next year if that hasn't been done, but you have our word it's going to be done. hasn't been done, but you have our word it's going to be done. I didn't hear.
Done. That thing is going to break before then.
Scott, is it going to break?
The water pipe.
We're.
He don't know.
Like anything can happen.
We monitor it. We know, we know the problems that's there with the sinkhole. My primary concern would be any significant change to the roadway surface. We have a barrel at that location that's indicating that it's a low spot. We add patch to it. It's sinking at a much slower rate than it was when it was gravel. The flow fill has helped. It did not correct the issue, but it certainly helped, and we are aware of it. My Monday morning drive is across it. Bro who knows to look at it as well.
Thank you.
To the Chair, just so, for understanding, in terms of an order of magnitude, culvert replacements are $300,000 to $500,000, depending on the size of the culvert and the location and the construction techniques that are used. So, these are significant investments by the community, and so it's not something that you just, it's not like there's a pothole and you're just going to go out and fix it. It takes a great deal, and you're dealing with wetlands and permitting. It takes time to do the borings and do design and to match it up with a funding plan. And that's really the key here. The key takeaway here is there's a comprehensive plan. There's a pavement management plan, and there's also a capital improvement plan. All these things were put in place years ago so that we're not lurching around and closing culverts and things collapsing. Anything can happen, and I'm not, and so, you know, you can have a storm and you can have something that looks perfectly fine now. You can lose a road. You can lose a culvert. That stuff happens. There's no guarantees in life. All you can do is take the information you have and make some assumptions and put a plan together. And that's where we're at right now. And we're following that plan, and this is the next step.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
Can I ask a question? So, first of all, thank you for coming. I think it's important that, that people have their say. One of the things that was mentioned in, I think you just mentioned in May, there was an engineering firm hired. Is, is there any possibility of, of a third-party assessment of the situation? Would that be too costly?
Two engineers who go on and look at a crushed pipe, all the things that Scott said that we've done, had the town engineer and Scott, who is also a professional engineer, they've looked at it. We don't need to spend money on assessment to say it's a crushed pipe. We know that it's failed and failing. It needs to be replaced. So, there's really not much more that would need to be done to do that.
I was a consultant for 23 years. This is what I did for them.
Well, I'm not questioning your credentials at all. What I'm, but what I hear is that there's a little bit of a difference of opinion about how this is going to hold up over the year or year and a half as we wait.
I don't think I heard a year and a half. I heard spring.
Spring, but then has to be dry weather, then.
I mean, there's a process that needs to take place. These things take permitting. They take, you know, design work. That's all in play. So, that's the timeframe that we would need to do this. So.
There's still no addressing the water main. That water main goes up to Iron Mountain, over Whitney Street, down to digital buildings, goes down barefoot road to.
Yeah, we're aware of it.
Well, you were aware of it. You know, when that closed, what happened?
Well, as Scott just said, we've done modeling. We know we can cut it and cap it and it won't have any issues for us. That's one, some of the modeling that was just done to make sure that we can, that we can do that if necessary.
Thank you.
So, where do you get the potential?
Jason.
People that are coming down the road, the street washing though.
Excuse me, Mr. Stone. Mr. Stone, I appreciate your concerns.
I appreciate it.
I appreciate your concerns for bringing them forward. I can't speak to your experience back in 2001, but I can say, based on what we've heard tonight, in the last seven, eight years, we've had an ongoing professional management of our capital infrastructure, which is comprehensive across all areas of town, not just on right.
Seventy-eight years, not six to seven.
I'd appreciate if you want to interrupt me while I'm speaking, sir.
Go ahead.
I've also heard from Scott Sharpentier, who is a licensed professional engineer, who's done this for 23 years, who's very experienced, very professional, very thorough, very comprehensive. I have no questions in my mind about his expertise or his opinions about this particular issue. Again, we have a number of areas in town that we're looking to address. We have a certain limited number of resources. We're prioritizing all of those projects, but making sure to execute them within the timeframe we have available, and to our best effort, try to ensure that there are no safety issues in the meantime, so that we don't have any problems like that. And if any safety issues do arise, I have no doubt that our town staff is going to be very responsive to that.
I just wanted the people of the town of Northborough to know that this is an issue. It's a dangerous issue, a very dangerous issue.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. And we're going to move on.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any other public comments? Hearing none. New business. Certification of notice of intent to the EPA is required under the EPA Small Municipal Separate Storm Sewer Service System. General permit. MS4.
Good evening.
Good evening. You're the other engineer.
The other engineer. I have before you a package that I had dropped off. The town administrator, it was a cover memo from me indicating that although I was here approximately a month ago and talked to you about authorization from the board for Scott and I to sign documents that need to be submitted to the EPA from time to time, this document that's before you tonight to sign is, does require certification from the board that the notice of intent has been prepared by professionals and is thorough and meets the requirements of the EPA Storm Water Management General Permit. So, that's what I'm here to ask you. I'm here to answer questions if you have some. Attached to the memo was a brief memo from Ty and Bond, our consultant, outlining the six minimum control measures and also the notice of intent, which is what we're asking you to actually certify.
Thank you. Questions, Leslie?
Yeah, Fred, thank you. Question on the, one of the six minimum control measures is three, illicit discharge detection and elimination. How do we go about that? What is, what is in place to take care of that?
Oh, there's a, we have an illicit discharge and detection bylaw, making it illegal to tie in inappropriate connections to the storm system and also to the sewer system. We do, we are required under the new permit to do some dry weather testing to see if we have any flow in pipes that shouldn't have flow when it's dry. Someone has a, an old cesspool that they may have had next to a sump pump, and that sump pump is connected to the storm system. Then leaching from that failing septic system could get into the stormwater system. And what we do, we do the dry weather testing, or we will do dry weather testing in order to determine if that's happening. And then we would work with the homeowner to make sure that connection is eliminated.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Have questions? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move the board vote to certify the notice of intent to the Environmental Protection Agency as required under the EPA Small Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System MS4 General Permit and to authorize Chairman Rand to execute same.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Follows in favor. Okay. Next we have, thank you.
Thanks, Ray.
On a separate note, on the traffic signal that you talked about earlier, they do, as John indicated by design, make it go into flashing mode. That, a week would be Friday. They will not turn it on to be active until the following Monday, so a week from today, this light should be operational.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ray.
Execution of cemetery deeds, 1061 and 1062.
I move the board vote to execute cemetery deeds, 1061 and 1062. Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Okay. Executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21, Subsection 3, litigation regarding Town versus Anza. Due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matter in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the board.
I move the board vote to enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter, Chapter 38, Section 21, Subsection 3, litigation regarding Town versus Anza. Due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matter in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the board.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Julian?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Aye. We will only go into, we'll go into executive session only to come out and open session just to adjourn.